...for Thursday, October 17th, 2019. All three selectmen present, town administrator is present, reported secretary is present. I have Mr. Leo Martel recording for the citizens who can't attend. Other, also, also on the attendance, I see the chairman of the planning board. I see a conservation commission member. I also see a Brett Sinclair. And I also see a member of the school board.
I'm just a member of the public.
Member of the public.
I still do. Not tonight.
You can step in and out of your room.
You own it. Alright, I'd like to, Dave, we'll ask Dave to speak upon the next item, first item for tonight.
I'd like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge a former selectman in the past and a longtime town resident, Ted Valleys.
Okay, last week, I, we made a move to cancel the meeting last week because we had a very sparse agenda. So rather than having a 10-minute meeting, I canceled it. So we moved on some whatever actions to be done this week, there was nothing pending. That was hot. I do have minutes from the October 3rd meeting, gentlemen.
Motion to approve the regular minutes on the October 3rd, 2009 meeting is amended.
I'll second both motions. I don't have the minutes here. Okay, no, no, I think if we can approve them and sign them afterwards. Is that already been acknowledged? Would it be yes? Okay, so those are approved and will they be sealed? I don't know.
Okay, this is a regular man. Yeah, we've done the non-public.
How did the non-public, public?
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public October 3rd meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're all set there. They can do that towards the end, just have them sign that they've been approved. Now, for this next item, I'm going to open up the public comment. Please state your name and we'll go around the room for public comment. So Mr. Leo Martel, no? Mr. Cagnett?
Nothing.
Yes, sir. Fred?
Fred Wallen. And sweetie, I forgot. We just want to bring you up to speed on the town boundary.
Yes, please.
I'm standing up so Bob can see who's talking. I forwarded an email I got from Tony of Lyquist of Lee and about the question about and see if Bo was approved or not, and Bo has.
Oh, fantastic.
And so then I emailed her again and to see if they had a surveyor that they would, of their choice, that would like to send us up the bid.
Sure.
Because I told them that we had from Lee had like two that feel like they get purchased by. So I just got an email, I saw it tonight about 25 minutes of subbing, and I forwarded it to you.
I got it.
Okay, and it says that the town administrator over there, Dave Stack, and says that they don't have any preference, they will leave all the done button to handle that. And so that's the way it stands right now, so it's against the balls of our court to either go up the bids or you have a time limit, when you want to try to do this or whatever.
I'd get the selectman to give approval for the expenditure of the dollars. To me, I call this, this is maintenance of town property and putting new boundary.
You did approve it in a motion.
Yeah, we did approve it in a motion, but did we get any estimates back from the?
No, we haven't done that because he was checking with the.
So now they can ask the grid.
Nothing's been sent out right now. Oh, one other thing, one of the selectmen in Bo says he has a town bound, a bounty marker, he wants to donate. So it would have to be engraved D and B on the side with a drill over the top. I'm assuming it's six by six by four feet because that's the standard size, I'm not sure what it is yet, but.
You might want to check that first.
I did some checking on, I did some checking on the cost of a bound, it's like $245, so.
Means all, just for the bond, would you mean?
Just for the bond. It's about $190 that have been engraved on it.
Okay, and installation probably another extra hundred for sure.
Well, all depends on how far back I have to go to, you know, to reach some of the older monuments or something.
And surveyor to ascertain the exact spot, correct?
Correct.
So when do we get the estimates from the two surveyors that will go from there?
We have a time limit, when I, if I send something out to, I was going to send it out to Jacques and also the British Valor Associates like we talked about before. And there's only two that I know of. One time we checked with Gosham when we had to replace, so use somebody, but the guy's out of business.
I'm happy with those two.
If we get those two bits, that'd be great, but I'd like to try and do it this fall if we could.
You want to, if I send it out to them, a timeframe for them to come back with something?
At least two weeks to come back to us, I want to do it for our grand freezes. So we got until December where they get it in.
Okay.
Do you agree, gentlemen? And as soon as you get the bid, you have the permission to, as town administrator, to execute on that? So I don't want to delay more than we have to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sir? This is public comment now.
Oh, public comment, heck no.
Is on the agenda?
You are on the agenda. But I appreciate your, your, your energy there. And Brett, do you have anything for us? Okay, and, sir, okay, I'm bringing it back to the board now. And, yeah, okay, I'll look at Dave, if you would.
Okay, I'll make a motion per RSA 31, Polar 95 dash B, Roman numeral three, paragraph A, to accept the donation. We have the check one. Okay, for $155 from the Go On Residence yard sale deposit into the invasive species CRF. Second.
Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
No.
Thank you for having the neighborhood out.
Pretty productive yard sale, I'd say.
Actually, it wasn't. We only had about six people, but we had, once people found out it was going to go to a no fall, we made a fine, all the seed had dollars there. And somebody that was running it, was new to the area, just donated $40.
Timing may have been a problem too, because it was on.
It was, well, no, but we had it last year, so what we decided to do, the neighborhood, we're going to postpone it and have it like every other year or something.
Okay.
We're going to have stuff to sell.
Gentlemen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bob, with your confirmation.
Okay, but thank you and the residents, you know, support all that you're doing and thank you for all your hard work.
And we did get the report on Mill Floyd.
Yes.
And good work, I mean, we're lucky this year.
We're very, very lucky.
I'm still doing data entry right now on all this stuff.
So as the board's aware, any funds that do not get used from this current year's warrant will lapse and have to be written into the warrant to deposit into the.
After town, at town.
Correct, and this could become part of the letter.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye.
You too. Jeff, you are on, you are on, sir.
Never mind.
The front row is for you, sir.
Thank you. I've got some papers and stuff, can I?
Sure.
Show you this.
Perfect.
Get it right out of your, sorry.
Just lay it out flat. Okay, the, so just as a little background. Um, I'm probably very much in the spirit of these sketches I've done back in.
The other? 2012.
Yeah, when we're proposing new renovations to the, to the building, I drew up some framing plans and so forth, which shows the configuration of the building. Sketch three shows a section through the building, a cross-section, and it shows the trusses, which are, as you know, are of concern. And identifies various pieces and so forth from there. And just to give you a little visual, there's some photographs from up there, you can come up from the space if you haven't been up there.
I mean, it's not hot enough yet. You raise the temperature. You feel comfortable.
Yeah, I had to find some photographs, didn't have lots of dust in them because every place you step up close to dust in them. And the glass would. So these are just the trusses, the top core truss and the center webs in there, and you can see beyond the eight-by-eight timber pearlins that hold up the rafters. And the truss, the purpose of the trusses is to support those pearlins as well as the attic floor framing. The issue we have, and I'm going to go right into some analysis stuff here for a second, I don't know how deep you want to get into this, but like you had there. I'll just do it. Anyone that might have. My phone, oh, there it is, sorry. I can see that. So the problem we have is with the configuration of the trucks, and if you look at this picture, this is the sloping top cord coming down, and a horizontal body coming across. And there's the column in the wall, it's a six-by-ten column, so that particular ones carries a bark on it. And then the six-by-six top plate on top of the wall runs over the column in their lap, and you can see one of the tins, so there's some mortise in the column. The problem is the sloping top cord meets the bottom cord a certain distance away from the support, the column. And there's a tremendous amount of axial compression in this sloping top cord. If you look on the analysis, and it's your M3 and your M4, it's a lot of compression in that, so it's driving down onto that bottom cord. Typically, when you design trusses, you design, you put the support directly underneath what we call the panel point, where the diagonal meets the horizontal, that's where you put your vertical support. When they build timber trusses like this, they can't because they're using mortise and tin joinery, they can't get all three pieces to meet at one point because you can't get the tins and the joints to work. So the joint for the sloping top cord is a certain distance away, and that's what's driving the problem with the bottom cord. We run through the analysis on the second page here, this is just the eight-by-eight bottom cord, and there's some graphics over on the right side. First one is the axial stress, it's in it, that's a tension that's in that bottom cord. The next one is the shear, it's a shearing force, and you can see right near the support, the shear is very high, 12.6 kips, that's 12,600 pounds. And then the bending moment, that's the bending stress in the bottom cord, again, that's very high right here near the support, just in from the support at 9,000 foot kips. So there's a lot going on, and this is the issue that is the most troubling, is when you look down at the bottom or circle those two items, the maximum bending check is 3.27. And 1.0 would be your maximum allowable stress, so according to the analysis, we're stressed about 3.3 times more than what that number should be allowed to carry.
And you said you've taken into consideration the slate roof and the fact that this is not.
Yes.
That's already in your calculation.
Yeah. So the snow load here with the slippery roof and the unobstructed eve is only 25 pounds per square foot, it's fairly light. In fact, our dead load is 25 pounds per square foot. When you take your slate on the slope and you take a horizontal projection of that, it's 25 pounds per square foot, so it's almost as much as the dead load.
Right.
So that bending check was 3.27, the shear check is 2.37, so that's over twice what that piece should be able to carry in this year. So way back when, folks engaged, the town engaged Joel Fisher, Fisher Engineering, and he put together this set of plans, two drawings, that showed some fairly significant reinforcing to this joint. He ran into some analysis problems that I get with this, this joint for the sloping top cord, the bottom cord, and the support. And as you know, he's got a lot of steel pieces in there, a lot of fabrication, a lot of connectors. His goal was to try to collect the load where the sloping top cord meets the bottom cord and through new steel framing get it all into the column. And actually, he was going to bring the load up on top of the column using some hanger bolts and that type of thing. Very involved, and I understand the contractor, they messed up the fabrication of steel, and then he took off and now we've got.
I think it was beyond their scope.
Yeah. I haven't checked his design, it looks like, you know, it would probably work out okay. One of the challenges with his design, other than the cost and the difficulty of trying to install nice straight pieces of steel on twisted and warped wood framing. Of different sizes, is if you look at the next picture, and you have two of those trusses that go right next to the chimneys. So you can't physically put structural steel reinforcing on the chimney side of that truss without taking down the chimney. And the one of the chimneys isn't used, the other one though, I think, we still have an oil, boiler or furnace, and that's used in another chimney, so. I'm not sure Joel, Joel Fisher didn't pick up, you know, how we handle his solution here, I'll have to whoever to figure that out.
He also had a dead weight, at least one dead weight to the structure too by the steel.
Yeah, not that much, not that much, it's, it's not enough to sway the numbers. So I took a different look at it, and after doing my analysis and rethinking this thing through. And I would suggest we be taking a different tack. By the way, there is no good solution. It's both economical and unobtrusive and easy to install and perfect and so forth. So this explains, first page explains those existing conditions I talked about, and these little targets where this sloping top cord comes down, it hits the top of the bottom cord, and it's notched into that bottom cord. And typically, that's where you would have your panel point, that's where you're driving the force from that sloping member into the, into the bottom cord. However, we extend the central line of that force down where it meets the central line of the bottom cord, and that's really the point that, that we have the difference between that and the center of the column, that's really our offset dimension of about 11 inches. And that's what's causing all of that shear stress and causing all that bending in that bottom cord right in that area. The column is a six-by-10, the bottom cord is an eight-by-8, the sloping top cord is a six-by-8, so they're all different sizes coming together there. The, the sloping top cord, again, you've got a forced, compression force that runs down, of this, it hits this point here and gets resolved into a vertical force and a horizontal force, vertical and a horizontal component. And this is almost a 12/12, so these are just about equal. And a horizontal component is resisted by bearing against that notch in the beam in the bottom cord. However, there's not much lumber between here and here, and that top of that beam can shear right off because if your stress is now shear parallel grain, which is very weak. When you think of splitwood, that's how you split wood, parallel grain. So I'm concerned about that, about that potentially shearing off that there's distress. There is a bolt that cuts through here, although it's fairly low and it looks like it's there just to kind of hold the pieces together, so it's very much transfer much force. So my proposed solution, and look the next page, is to bracket underneath the trusses. And not go through all of the structural steel that Joel was putting against the sloping top cord and against the bottom cord, and everything else, we just have some structural steel brackets below. And that's intended to pick up that force and reduce that 11-inch offset dimension and bring that, the support back underneath that bottom cord, closer to the point where the sloping top cord meets the bottom cord. It's a plate steel, 3/8 inch, fastened with.
STS screws?
These guys? That size, quarter inch. Drive right in, they're self-drilling, self-tap it. The, this, this solution would work at every truss, including the ones next to the chimney, it wouldn't interfere with the chimney. The problem is, we need a stiffener plate on here, which is this piece right here. And that's going to stick below the ceiling. So for each truss location.
Would you have to mount it below the ceiling anyway?
Yes, so this is mounted below the ceiling, the 3/8 plate and the head of this would probably get buried in the drywall and in the plaster. We'd have to cut the plaster out so we can attach this directly to the column and directly to the bottom cord of the truss and then patch it.
Can I answer your question, Jeff?
Sure.
If we use a longer STS, could we leave the drywall in place?
No.
Too soft.
Yeah, you're essentially trying to span the.
You have to cut off on the top and on that.
Right, we've got to put this right, right to the wood. So how do we deal with that? Because now when you're staying in the room, you're going to see this, these brackets at each of the trusses, and you go all the way back through this set here. You can see where the windows are and where the trusses are, and it's not like the trusses are perfectly aligned with the windows and the food windows still, they're kind of offsets. So in the front, you've got four windows, one, two, go to the next plan, and then plan and see all four of them. The first two trusses that you, I mean, we're connecting the end wall, trusses on lines two and line six. Line two, that truss, I think, is just behind the stage wall, for senior arch. So that one shouldn't be a problem. The truss at line six, I think, is right at the stud wall, so that one can be concealed. It's the other three, on lines three, four, and five, that you'd be intruding into that space with this steel bracket. Now, a thought I had was, I think at some point, the intent is to go ahead and put a tin ceiling, a steel ceiling back on it. A lot of these halls that I go into that have these ceilings also have a curve of tin around a prun. And if you portion it correctly, you could hide all these in that curved section. The time you go to do that, you can conceal it. Worst comes to worst, you just do the kind of cornice thing, maybe runs down the whole side, some border trim or something, and hide it that well. But I think it's a much simpler solution, not a perfect solution.
The much.
The fabrication is, is minimal. The installation should be fairly reasonable, you don't necessarily have to go in there and patch. Part of them may want us to patch, just so you know, the hole into the stud wall or hole.
Yeah. Jeff, would these, would these STS screws be better off slightly pre-drilled, only to keep from splitting that beam by driving them all in?
On help at all? Yes, it would. They're, they're supposed to be self-drilling, but as you know, they, they grind up the fibers as a couple days.
So even, even a substantially smaller, but you know, just a little pre-drilling, just a little.
Yep, and there's a, there's a, the Simpson has a pre-drill, a drill diameter if you want to.
Yeah.
So the holes in the bracket are what would be 5/16 inches diameter, these are quarter inch screws, so there's enough room for them to dig in. And the idea is that when it really gets stressed, the wall comes in play. Now, the condition is working now, I'm not seeing any indication that this connection is failing. So the brackets are really there so that if this connection ever does fail, at some point, we've got something to catch it. I don't know if you're aware of the.
It also translates, it's sort of a blow already to the.
Right.
That's what the bad thing is.
There was an issue with the church over in Hookset Village, they had a timber roof system, and I got a call one day from a contractor, said, can you hurry up and come over here, the ceiling is about 15 inches. And cut it. But I talked to him today to find out what was going on, and he said, somebody was intending to join some of the trusses that were broken, and they're lucky they didn't lose the building. So typically, they're, they're done well and they last for a long time, but they do occasionally let go, and our stress analysis said we have a real potential for something to go wrong here. And it would probably be the time when we have snow on the roof, if we're going to windmill.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, everything's gone together.
You're snow on one half.
The steel, the steel is, how big, how big is the steel?
Three eighths.
What's the steel we have?
It's not reusable for this application, we better have these made brand-new, but they're not overly large, and I don't think there's a huge expense there.
Yeah.
There's 10 of them.
Yeah, 10 of them.
Yeah, 10 of them.
And, and you're right, if your fabricator loses something, they may be able to.
Work with us.
Yeah, right. If they misfabricated the other stuff, they may.
He didn't really misfabricate, just the person that gave them the dimensions didn't do it properly, so. They went off the paperwork and didn't do a field verification.
Okay.
So they made them up, and didn't get paid for a long period of time, but we didn't issue them up at the end of March.
His fire is whole.
Okay. He didn't say he'd rework anything, we really needed to get this job straight out.
I think their problem was the fact that the steel wasn't done properly, and even if Coleman redid the steel, the amount of money that they figured was way short of what they really needed to do the job. Because the last guy that came in looked like he was going to regain us, doesn't he last in a day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if you take a half inch of sheetrock out and put this bracket with the fasteners in there, on the bottom half of the bracket, would you recommend mudding right over the bracket again?
Yeah, I think so, I think that'd be fine, again, it's, whatever you're going to do is sort of temporary for now, and ready to figure out what you're going to do to the space. Right now, I think there's a 5/8 drywall up there on strapping, because when the metal ceiling came down way back when, and we decided to put a drywall up there, I said, let's make it a fire code, just so you can.
Yeah. So that's good, so with the strapping in there, we've got plenty of depth there to get rid of it.
Right. And the, it's, part along the wall is, and I'm not sure how thick the wood lap and plaster is, usually they're run about 5/8 to 3/4.
Yeah.
So you could plaster over it and kind of, kind of hide these things. And temporarily.
Now, on the, on the end walls, would they be on the end walls, or just the trusses inside?
Just the four trusses.
Five, five, 10 total.
10, 10 total.
So this would have to be put out to bid. We'd have to have specifications of it.
Yeah, I'd want to put together, you know, a construction package of sketches and so forth. There's also some other things, as I was wandering around the attic up there, Joel and Joel Fisher had indicated, you know, some two-by-four ties across on top of pearlins. His intent was that they would occur at every rafter, they're only at each truss. So we do need to tie that, and that's clear that we've got to tie these together. We have to take the top of this and turn it into a peg. So that we don't have horizontal thrust from the rafters.
You think anyone has gusset?
No, just two-by-fours, male two-by-fours.
Oh, okay.
And they can sit right over top of this, six-by-six beam that runs down the top, that's bracing the trusses now, they can sit right on it, we can lap and nail, just a lap and nail, can't you?
Okay. Oh, the people from spread.
Yeah, it's a tension connection.
So all the way across?
Right.
So you're not talking about gusset at each end, that you're continuing to.
Yeah, you're looking at each one, each rafter. So there's a bunch of those you need to do, you have to figure out how to tie in rafters on the hip ends here to make sure we tie them in horizontally as well. I don't believe this six-by-six that runs across the top was properly connected to this pearlin on the end. It was supposed to run all the way out and connect it to tie that pearlin back, and actually tie both pearlins together from the end. I don't think that's been done right, I need to get back there and come up with a, kind of a list of work that needs to be done to, to complete the job.
The other thing, Jeff, I think I would mention to you, I did not like to see is in the four corners.
Yeah.
He was transferring the load from that hip rafter.
Right.
Down onto the ceiling.
Yeah.
I didn't know, I've never seen that done. But also, he wanted to notch the hip, hip rafter, which would, in all essence, make it weaker, and I didn't like that either. I would rather a mechanical fastened area if we, if we could do that. Or eliminate a fair new idea altogether.
And let me take a look at that, I'm not, I'm not sure we need them.
I was glad that I did not cut into the hip rafter, because you just cut it at an angle, hom nailed it in.
Because you can scat something out.
Yeah, you can, so I, I was glad to see that, I, I really didn't like that he brought the load up to the ceiling.
Yeah, because the ceiling, Joyce, they're two-by-sevens, they're mortised into the bottom cord of the trusses. I think they lap the studs, or they sit on a one-by-rim on the balloon, because the studs on the end are balloon past the attic floor, another two feet up to the, to the top plate, so. Yeah, I'm not crazy about how that's transferring more of that, I'll take another look at that as well.
Got to be on my list. Next up would be to finalize your, the smaller repairs to be done with wood.
Yeah.
Maybe you could help develop specifications.
I mean, sharing point, put it all together as one package.
Then would be, we have to go up for bid process. What we'd like to be able to do if we could, because we have money set aside somewhat this year for that, is try to get it bid so we can uncover the money at least, even if the winter work is done during the middle of this winter. Even if the winter work is done during the middle of this winter. We'd like to encumber some of that money, so it's not rolling year to year, if we could help out.
The important thing is not to be trying to do the reinforcing while there's snow on the roof. And there's not snow on the roof very often. Yeah, that would be fine. I was speaking to Mr. Blaison over at North Branch. They're looking for work like this. They've got capacity sitting there with nothing to do. So they'd be interested in...
What would you be, I appreciate you doing this for the town. First of all, I would say thank you. I acknowledge it, and I think we're grateful. Again, a second revise on this. Your turnaround time, so when could we, when could we expect to probably start getting out onto the bid process?
I would say the, no, less than that. Shoot for the end of next week, the list planned for the week after.
Okay, so two weeks.
You're on the top of my pile, so. The trick's staying there.
Well, we, like Paul said, we appreciate all the work you've done. I know it takes a long time to look at this thing from the ground up and go through it all, and...
A lot of head scratching. As I say, there's no real perfect solution. The challenge with the solution that I proposed is there's potential of creating some twisting in the column. As soon as you, as soon as you pick up a racket like that and plunk a load on it here, centered with the column, now you're putting a little twisting into the column.
But like you said, they may not do anything until, until one day they're needed, so.
And quite frankly, we already have twisting going on in columns, so I'm okay with it.
Danger to the public as we stand right now?
It's, it really has me nervous. When you run the analysis and we're looking at that much overstress. You know, if we're overstressed by, you know, double, okay, well, the allowable stress for the lumber is kind of a guessing game as well. Assuming it's local white pine. There's long sticks of wood here. We had lots of white pine back then. Could be spruce, because we were cutting a lot of spruce up in our country. In the town report from 2000, no, not 2000. This was built in 1909. You've probably seen the original drawings of what we have of the drawings and the specs.
Is this his original drawings?
Yeah, Mr. Stone. They're kind of preliminary, because the existing building doesn't match up with that. Where they have basement columns on a ten-by-ten grid, we've got them on a thirteen-by-twelve grid. There's not three rows of columns, there are only two rows of columns supporting the floor. So where his specs call for certain sizes of wood and framing, somebody re-engineered it at some point. Anyways, you go back to the 2000, 1910 town report, and they have what they spent every penny on listed in the town report. And so I'm looking at the lumber, and in some places, they tell us, like the sills, chestnut sills. Thirty-one hundred and seventy-seven feet of chestnut sills. But they call for common framing timber, boards are all pine, pine boards. They have a lot of hemlock lumber, which is mostly a joist, some called hemlock lumber. But they're not clear about what the long timbers are for the trusses. And I don't trust what Mr. Stone has in there, because the framing configurations changed from what he developed.
It was, could be hemlock or spruce.
Right. I mean, did they, you know, $2.20 to John Burrows for 22 loads of gravel? And Rex threw in nine loads of sand, $1.35. I mean, everything's in here, but they said...
He also has our price guidelines, right?
Yes, yes, right. So that's a little helpful in knowing what some of that stuff is. Now, one more thing. Back in 2012, when I was pulling through the building top to bottom, underneath the stage, you can stick your head down through some holes on the floorboards to see what the second floor framing is. And that's how I was able to measure the timbers and the joists and everything to come up with those sketches for the second floor frame. The last picture here is shooting down one of those joist panels. And you can see your diagonal boards, floorboards on top of the joists. That's a gas pipe that's running through there by the light. Then this stuff underneath is the wood furring and the metal ceiling of the library. And you can see over on the right side, there's a little crown next to the crown of metal. And they've got these, I forget what size they are, probably one-inch by two-inch deep pieces of wood furring. And you look over on the, on the right side, and there's a nail. And there's a gap between the furring and the joists. And every place I looked, there was a gap between the furring and the joists. And that's exactly what happened to the ceiling on the second floor. Those nails started pulling out and withdrawing. And mainly because the lumber, when it was installed, was green. When you nail into lumber and load it and withdraw, when the lumber shrinks, you get very, very low capacities out of your nails in withdrawal. And the attic, after they, the attic floor, after they insulated, when the library did their renovations, just that little additional weight caused these things to come out even more. And then we had a progressive collapse. One let go, and one next to it, and the whole thing kicked down. Same thing's happening here. The advantage of here is if you look at sketch one, this section here, this is your second floor framing plan. Your ceiling is broken up into smaller squares. And on the sides, it wraps down around the beams and so forth. So it's not like we've got a full forty-by-fifty or forty-by-seventy foot area, whatever that was on the second floor. That collapsed, was all just supported by the furring here. So it's hanging around, but if we ever start reusing that second floor, people walking on it, movement, anything, you know, dynamic loading, dancing and aerobics or anything like that, we're going to loosen it up even more. We've got to start thinking about coming up with a way to come in from underneath the library and reattach.
Screws?
Some kind of screws. The hard part is going to be finding where this furring is and finding where it crosses the joists.
Is it probably not, measurement's probably a little off, there's probably no sign of uniformity?
Yeah, I mean, the green is probably two foot by two foot for the cement, but the joists are, I think, they might be sixteen, what are they sitting there? No, they're about seventeen, so they could be anywhere from sixteen to eighteen inches on sand. And you don't want to go doing a lot of, there's a lot, you know, poke a lot of holes in it.
That only, only asks the biggest question if we want to preserve the ceiling.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's historical nature of the building, and that's, it's used to be made.
Especially where it's a pretty easy fix with just some screws here and there, we're waiting. Yeah, our part is, is finding the right spot to put the screw.
Do those stud fighters find that?
They may find a furring. Actually, you can find the furring, because the furring's on the joints and the panels. But it wears the furring across a joist. And maybe with, if John Stevens has his thermal imaging camera, maybe when it's cool up there and warmer down below, he might be able to pick up some temperature change, see where the joists are. And just, you know, put a little dog or something, and then run some through. But just try to get some screws up there and...
You're going to make that part of your package?
I don't think so at this point. Probably a little setback, a step back on that.
Let that be another...
Yeah, let that be. And that's just something we can take care of. It'd just be some GRKs. The GR screws. And we'll just paint over, paint them white like the rest of the sand. So they don't have to be white screw, you're just... But it's something we should take a look at at some point. And also, whenever we get around to renovating the second floor, we get to it, we have to look at the metal ceiling that's still in these areas here and probably reattach those to. Same thing's going on around here.
Okay, okay. One last question. Any of these renovations, the ceilings, would they impact the, there have been proposals for actually doing major renovations to the exterior, the building to, I mean, lift or elevator? Altering the group, group name, would now have any impact on future renovations?
No, just how we deal with those stiffener plates and brackets, and how they may intrude into the space and how we conceal them.
I might, might not have the correct word for it, but there are also wooden brackets, like a cubicle. And Vipon makes them, there's authentic wood ones that you could slide, you know, have a slice in it, slide right over there and have a decorative wood bracket in those three locations as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
On each side, three on each side, that wouldn't look that bad for the time being.
Right.
And we do something like maybe a metal roof or something down the future.
We'll see. Yeah, I don't see what we're proposing to do is going to have an impact on any future renovations, other than perhaps medically, how we deal with those.
But I hear your concerns that there's a potential danger there.
Yeah.
All right, so again, I just want to say thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any last questions before we go? I really appreciate your time, and it's a busy season to be doing this in too. We look forward to getting some specs identified and then putting out the bids. A big thank you.
No problem.
Jeff, is there any portion of this which you need us to pay for? Thank you again from the town.
I'll send you all of these documents, if you have any, and say, "Okay, Grace, we'll have that..."
Thanks, thank you. I'm going to hear them and find out what our tax rate is. You need to go to the other board. The other board, that's where it's going to hurt. Okay, continue on the gentleman. Tax rate?
All right, everyone has a copy of the tax rate that was set up the Department of Revenue. And attached to that form is the MS 434R, which is what we discussed a couple of weeks back in regards to our estimated projected revenues that would offset the taxes. We made no changes to those numbers on the MS 434. The changes in the middle column of that form are the numbers that the Department of Revenue and I discussed. And may have shifted them within the accounts, within the DRA tax counts. So the small changes like payment and move taxes, the 3186, that was moved in to include flood control, 3357. So that increase that's shown there at 5,648 is actually part of the payment and move taxes. So that's what I do with the Department of Revenues. We go through every single line item and come up with changes. The three big ones that are critical that we didn't have at the tax rate setting, the MS 434, like this, we have tax there. She was able to give me the meals and rooms tax distribution for Dunbarton. We had budgeted an estimated 135, which is consistent from year to year. That's on the first page, about three quarters down. And the numbers came in at 146,694. So that was an increase of 11,694. We'll take it.
Yes, we'll take it.
The highway block grant, again, we typically budget conservatively at 90,000. The number came in at 104,438, which is an increase of 14,348. And then the other item that we always have an estimate on is the flood control, which we've been using a conservative number of 70,000. This year, that flood control payment came in at 75,648, so that you saw an increase of 5,648. Unfortunately, we cannot take that extra money and just leave it to lapse into the general fund. And I asked Michelle that. She did say that they have a letter from the state that says, "These final numbers for these three categories, you have to use that to offset your taxes." So they have increased our recommended estimated revenues to include those, the 31,780 that's in that little group there. So the adjusted numbers with, including the additional funding that we use to apply for surplus, as listed at the bottom, total revised estimated revenues. And then the very last page, what we use from outside fund balance surplus, which was voted at town meeting for the 271,140. So these are the little numbers that we look at back and forth. And by plugging these numbers in, along with what is required that we need to raise and appropriate to cover the cost of the town, is broken down on the tax rate that you have on the second document.
You've got the requested overlay there too?
Yeah, that you'll find on the very last page of the tax rate setting. So that 844 dollars, the way the DRA explained it to me is that a lot of these formulas are in thousands. So when they come to a, either a shortage or an overage, they usually use the overlay number as a plug. So the board approved 50,000 for overlaying, there's a plug of 844 dollars that was required to get the thousands within the tax rate, which now comes to a total of 2721. It was an imaginary thousand number there. So we have to plug in that 844 dollars. So the approved tax rate for municipal actually came in at $4.60, which is the same as last year. The county went up, our school went down four cents for $3.07. The local education came in at $17.09, an increase of $4.65. And the state education came in at $2.45, which is an increase of seven cents. So total increase for the 2019 tax rate is $4.68. So the warrant that I will be running tomorrow will be based on the $27.21 total tax rate. If you look at, if you go to the last page, we discussed this with the, our auditor. They received the MS 535, which is our financials, and they've just completed in 2018. That information is given to the Department of Revenue. Our current, based on our budget, our current retained amount is 477,351, which puts us at 4.76. They recommend a 5%, which would be of 501,000 dollars.
Would we put that on share for the number? Would we put to bring it to the 470 step of our share?
That is actually with what we expended, our surplus, even though it's just, we'll discuss it more at length with the auditor. But our surplus did not go up a whole lot, and we used 271,000. Oh, we took, it was a total of 271, with warrants, surplus, and then other funds from other accounts. So unfortunately, it is what it is. You do have the option of using additional surplus. Again, the DRA recommends 5%. We are going to talk a little bit later, just briefly, because we have a public hearing scheduled for next Thursday. You'll be receiving 23,000 and change from the state for an unanticipated revenue in two installments of 23,600 weekly. But I do have to follow the guidelines, so we have to have a public hearing on that for next Thursday.
After that public hearing, I mean, if we choose to put that amount of money, because it looks like it's almost a perfect amount of money to get us up to the full 5%.
Okay, so when I spoke to Michelle about the MS 431, she brought up that revenue, because she knew about it. And I told her I had not accepted it legally under the RSA. So she said she will back it out to zero, so this 477 does not include that 23 that we've got in the bank now. So that's actually another 23, which will actually put us right almost up to 5%.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
So later tonight, when we vote on that, we can talk about using that amount in that capacity instead of putting it... Now, are there any restrictions on that money? Well, if there's no restrictions, if we can put in here for that.
It's unanticipated. You have to have a public hearing, because it's over 10,000. It's scheduled for next Thursday. You will not be there, so I do want to touch on it briefly tonight to get your opinion as to what you think we should do with it. If you do nothing, it will be lapsing. If you do nothing, it will be lapsing into the surplus and it will increase that four seventy-seven up to the five hundred, which is where we will be at. So you can give the board your recommendation. Next week, they will vote on it.
All right.
Okay. And that's all I have for the tax rate.
Hey, how's the tax rate?
It's lower than what we predicted last March.
This is good.
Yes.
Now, what was the last year, twenty-five, is it changed?
Twenty-two, it was twenty-two.
Was it twenty-two?
Yeah.
It was four, four dollars.
The difference is...
Did I type it on here?
Twenty-two fifty-three.
Twenty-two fifty-three.
Yeah, twenty-two fifty-three.
But you're right, Paul, the year prior, that was at twenty-five.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Before we had the, before we had the dip in it.
Right.
We had it at twenty-five.
Right, which is where he said it was two eighty-something, that is what you were projecting. If we had not gotten that million-dollar grade, we would be at the same increase that you were projecting.
That's what, that's what I was getting at, you were... Not, not, not the one that was adjusted, right, so on the prior, but the one prior to that.
Yeah.
Isn't a big difference in any amount, you know?
Yeah.
So people might have a little bit more. I think they're going to want to try and pick up.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, that's good.
All right, so tax rate done.
All right.
So I think from what I'm hearing, and I don't believe there's any motion that needs to be taken.
No.
We're not going to make any changes or recommendations?
No.
Okay.
I think, and then we just, we have to have a public hearing next for the acceptance of those other dollars. We have a tenant plan. I will, we'll announce our tenant plan at that year with the doing of dollars.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of money, but...
No, because it, it would take a hundred thousand dollars to impact our taxes by thirty-two cents. So with twenty-three and...
Probably better off to just let it lapse into the...
No, but at least put it towards a, a, like that. I mean, it brings the...
We're going to talk about it later anyway.
Yeah, all right. All right, moving on. Another, any, any road? Good job. I understand the Conservation Commission concluded their public hearing, and we got your written response. It went well. And I understand you stood by the original recommendations you made to the plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so my goal tonight, question by two gentlemen is, uh, I would like to expedite this. We waited on it. Um, because we want to make sure we had the public hearing. Dave, that was a good suggestion. Um, and we have input from the planning board, we have input from the fire department, we have input from the conservation commission. And I think, uh, we can review, we've been reviewing it, and I think we can open up for discussion. And I'm going to, since you're here, and the planning board chair is here too, if you have any additional information you want to share with us before we start discussing it, I'm going to open up for you guys to comment on it. This is on the Guinea Road, uh, with, of the road. And the requirements are going to set up for the, uh, for the gentleman to upgrade. We want to make sure the standard where we can accept the road and then maintain it thereafter. So if you have no comments, it's fine. We'll...
I do.
Okay, sir.
Uh, I did read the Conservation Commission's summary, and it indicates that the, the roadway shall remain unpaved. I don't think that's a good thing. Like any roadway in the future should be dealt with in the future. I don't think you're going to wind up paving it at any early date, but...
It's not on our list of high priorities.
Yeah.
In fact, I would say it's not a priority at all.
Knowing that might be the situation, condition, I don't think that's a fair thing to leave in there.
Okay. Um, but again, that was only a recommendation.
Right. That's just my opinion too.
Understood. Okay. Um, all right, and anything from your side?
I would just say that, um, again, we respected the, um, position of the planning board and felt like they had comp, you know, quite frankly, probably compromised from what, um, you know, they might have liked to see. Um, you know, appreciated the, you know, uh, twenty-four foot, you know, recommendation. We came down on the eighteen foot plus the, you know, twenty-two foot width in total to be consistent with what we had, um, you know, done in terms of dial hill road and, uh...
I, I...
Yeah, so that's, that's, you know, again, we respect the other, you know, uh, bodies' opinions, and, and that's why we came down, believe it. Yeah, and in hearing the feedback.
Yeah. And, um, one thing I'd like to start off is, um, I saw a, uh, at the planning board level, as a servant of the planning board, I saw an original picture of over a hundred years ago of the original road. It went from wall, rock wall to rock wall. It was nice and flat. There were no gullies, no divots in it, and I thought it looked really nice. And, um, personally, I, I think if we start removing rock walls and repositioning them, we're changing the historical nature of the road.
It was a good thing they put in on their comments is that any rock walls that are moved shall be rebuilt.
Right, but it can...
That's good.
Rebuilt location to be determined. But once you stop moving rock walls, you destroy the historical nature of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And that was my concern. On the other hand, I, I feel for the, uh, for the, uh, road agent. He's, he's charged with maintaining the road. He would like to have his, he'd like to have open road all the way up and down. And the thing is, I can realize his position too. And so, and then I put myself in the shoes of the prospective landlord who wants to build on it. And he's being charged with the responsibility of upgrading that road to make it passable and acceptable to the town to accept it so we can maintain it. So we got multiple factors in here. And, um, so my, my philosophy I want to share with these gentlemen is that I don't like, I want to see stone walls remain where stone walls are. I like to keep the historical nature of the fact that the road originally went from wall to wall with no divots and no gullies. And there was a common agreement that the road's going to be brought up to the same level as it was before. And the shoulders extended to the wall so it was, so the walls don't collapse over time. And I don't want to, I don't want to increase the expense for, unnecessarily for, uh, a, uh, a road that's not necessarily traveling a lot to these new landfills, to the applicants. So that's my philosophy. I'm going to open up to my peers here, and if they have any comments after they...
Sorry.
Okay.
Something from...
Go ahead.
When the state, uh, passed this scenic road years back, they, they had the intention that the towns would have these, we have like, what, five or six scenic roads?
Correct.
And little by little, we lose them because what's happening is, Gallow Road's not what it used to be. Gallow Road's not what it used to be. Blackwood Road definitely isn't what it used to be. And so their intent was, you know, to keep, um, a rural nature and so that people can enjoy that. And as I said to the Conservation Board, is that, um, every road in town is beautiful, there's no doubt. I know that, and I literally have long enough to see it all, except that they didn't choose thirteen as a scenic road. You know, they, we chose, the town chose specific roads to be scenic roads. And then, and as time goes on, we're tearing them apart, widening them and paving them and just for the pleasure of the, the road agent can plow easier. Heck, Dave, you live on a small road. It is plowed.
Mm-hmm.
Every year gets plowed.
Yeah.
Every year gets maintained. So I have no feelings towards, uh, the DPW at all. I figure, you know, the more we tear these roads apart, the less we're going to have, and that's, and you know, we're just going to have none of them left. You know? And that's my attitude. And while I was at their, uh, public hearing, I didn't hear one voice saying they wanted it wider and what they recommended. Not one voice.
Was there quite a good public attendance?
There was about eight people, I think. No, I don't think so.
But, uh, the thing is, uh, I agree, I, I acknowledge your statement. And the thing is, um, I'd like to keep it historically accurate as best we can. I was, as I said when I started, I want to, I, my personal feeling is that I don't want to see stone walls removed and relocated just to make it wider. I like to maintain the road that we maintained that's been there for over many, many decades.
Just remember when they stopped widening the road, these large trees, when they pulled the stumps off, the wall was wider.
Understood. But the thing is, it should be, the wall should be re-put in the same identical spot where it's wide, without necessarily widening it.
Good luck with that.
Understood. Okay, gentlemen.
See, I like seeing consistency with what we adopt and what we do. So, you know, when you keep changing it, as a different entity comes before you to want to adjust the road, continuously changing it doesn't send out a good message, doesn't send out, uh, what the intent is. And, you know, a scenic road is a scenic road, and albeit that the landlord has a right to do what they want with their property, it'd be kind of nice if they kept that in mind, because they want to keep the idea of a scenic road, except for where these people are. And so, you know, I, I'm kind of, I'm drawn towards the Conservation Commission's, uh, idea, or not idea, but ideals for the scenic road. And I just think it, it's, uh, changes the character, the rural character of the town. And growing up in a small town, watching them, the owners of all their scenic roads, so that they're all, it's the same thing. It, it's a, it's a change for the few roads we have. I don't think we'd like to see, we'd like to see it being a consistency amongst everybody.
Dave? First of all, I want to thank everybody that made that field trip onto the property, all the department heads and different commissions, Conservation Commission, the planning board, the select board, and the fire department, and the highway department that went out there. It shows that the town's willing to work with the landlords to try and do the right thing. I also want to thank all of the people that gave recommendations back to the board. And some background that was done by Wayne and Kent. And, uh, also, when I read the Conservation Commission's letter, um, even today, I read it from page to page, all the way down through. It gave us some real good depth of the background of Guinea Road and brings it to current times. And, um, it's very well-written. I want to say that your board did a nice job trying to approach every aspect of the road, the construction of the road, even though I understand that you're on the scenic end of it, not so much the construction.
Yeah, not our part of you, but that's, yeah.
But it, but it helps to have, uh, you know, that the board looked at all those things. Um, I would like to stay consistent with it. Uh, I will tell you, from doing a site walk out there, listening to the road agent and then going back and forth, my thought was to, to try and go somewheres in the middle of those and maybe have a, keep all the dimensions that you've stated with the shoulders being only two feet, because there's not room for four-foot or three-foot shoulders, but maybe sticking to a twenty-foot width instead of an eighteen-foot width. Um, for a total width of twenty-four foot, which does fit within the walls, so the walls would not have to be touched. And if this road is going to be reconstructed, as we noticed, all the large trees on their property were cut on the left side of the road. And there were no walls where their house was going to be built on that side of the road. So definitely the right side wall and that bigger tree line should be maintained, and I agree with that.
Yeah, and that's actually, you know, mail ends proper, I would say.
And, and I would like, if they're going to cut something over fifteen inches in diameter, four feet off the ground, to have them go to your board and ask for that permission as we go through this, because, um, but that was my thought, that we would meet halfway in between, um, the road agent had asked for twenty-four-foot width on the room plus three-foot shoulders. So...
Just email kind of, I want to do.
Yeah, twenty-four-foot round road. That's a planning board, right, but the outlier was he wanted a longer, a twenty-four-foot road with three-foot shoulders. It would take it just like that. Don't forget the third road, gentlemen, and, you know, you have the tall shoulders here. It's called, what's the width, right there?
I like to be even more flexible. I like to be flexible to a point where, um, no stone walls are removed in the construction of this road. And in the sense that if it's nineteen feet, or if it narrows down a little bit, it stays narrowed down, following the natural contour of the existing stone walls. Dave, what do you...
So I, I don't think, I don't think there's a need to move any of the walls either. But I do, I do like the fact that they're, uh, going to bring the grade up with the road where it has trenched out over the years and bringing that up with the rough gravel, so...
I think that would have to be your recommendation.
Yes. Yeah, but it was nice to see it, get both boards pointed that out so that we can, you know, get that in there as part of it.
Yeah, I don't mind the improvement, okay. I, I just want to see consistency with the width. And, and, uh, being realistic, there's some scenic roads that you're not going to get to twenty-two feet or twenty-four feet wide, because they're na, they're narrow by, by choice. The walls aren't there or whatever. Uh, you've got a swamp on both sides of one road, and you just have a road going across, and you're not going to change that character. So staying within the consistency that adopts the characters, which is what I'm reading, when I'm reading the conservation, uh, recommendation. Uh, and I, I suppose it could be lenient, but I, I'd be challenging myself to change it to twenty-four feet wide.
I know it wasn't a scenic road, but we did just have Purgatory Pollard upgraded, and he had the full-size width and the full-size shoulders. I know there were more. There was more room on that roadway. I don't think there were very many stone walls, if any, to affect that road width. Um, but we did have that landlord bring that up to the full plus five roads, back standards on there. Although it wasn't on the scenic road, I don't believe it, no.
I, I just want to point out too, as soon as you, the road, it's, pointing out, it's just a dirt road. We're not going to pave it at this point, or require it to be paved. Uh, as soon as you bring in, fill up those divots, those become the shoulder regardless, I mean, that becomes almost the road, almost to the edge of, edge of the rock wall. It's just dirt there. And they make it only narrow and have only the shoulder be only like a few feet on each side. It's going to, I, I, in my opinion, I would just, you just create the inevitable happen, wash out again, and it's, it's going to be a narrow road like it is now. It's going to be naturally narrow over time. Make it from wall to wall. And the wall, wall to wall, where is approximately twenty-four feet across from wall to wall?
So that would be twenty feet plus two foot shoulders.
Right, and that would take it from wall to wall.
I measured mine already at fifteen feet.
Mine's twelve, fifteen too.
Driveable.
That's because yours is, was it, we're broken down the two-ride road down there, so...
But it is a scenic road. And if you, and you, you know, the road, it used to be that width all the way up until everybody, almost like you started taking that part apart, that part apart. The only part that's left intact is mine, because I've been fighting with just the others.
I'm going to bring it back to Boyd. Thank you, Will, for that, though. Uh, but I'd like to just review it one more time. The Conservation Commission's comments, the consents. The thing is, I'm not recommending that this road be paved. I concur with the Conservation Commission there. Um, I disagree with them. I don't think any stone walls need to be moved at all. I keep them where they are. I don't want them moved narrow. I don't want them moved further out. So I disagree with you. I don't think there's going to be any movement of stone walls. And tree cutting truly the limit if it's impossible. I agree with that, but we're not widening the road from what it is now.
You want me to try and make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just going to review, I'm just reviewing one just, uh...
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, just a road width of eighteen feet, and that would still create a divot on each side. And I think is, I want to eliminate the divots on each side. And by going from stone wall to stone wall, you essentially eliminate divots. And it allows the, uh, I mean, the road agent halfway in the sense that he's not getting, not nearly what he wanted. He wanted, and what he wanted would have required, um, actually remove stone walls. I'm not going to go there. Fire department, I want to speak. Fire department was happy. He needed a minimum of eighteen feet wide and two-foot shoulders. And so that's, uh, becomes really a non-discussion point, because it's going to be at least that, whatever we decide. And then planning board, we have a planning board's, uh, last items was they wanted a road of twenty-four, coming to a, twenty-foot width, and then two feet shoulders on each side. And that's essentially the width of the road for stone walls. So gentlemen, let's...
Can I just speak before you make that move, Dave? I know you've said that you don't anticipate any rock walls will be moved. What if in the case it does need to be moved? That's why he worded it this way in the event. So I think if you consider, if you're assuming that rock walls are...
And then, no, no creative absolutely.
Right, so...
Well, I think, I think I could, the Conservation Commission, I don't think...
Rock walls and the trees goes back.
Yeah.
I want to make a comment. I could close, but I'm going to take the call.
Just, I think it might be easier to, let's say, administer this, if, if you don't, you know, kind of do it practically. If instead of saying from wall to wall...
I was going to use that one. I was just saying.
Okay, but to go with your twenty plus two plus two, the twenty-four, I think it's just easier.
Yes, and non-disturbing the walls.
Yeah, and I think it will be, that will mean that there... Yeah, and I think it will be, that will mean that there can be trees left that don't need to be cut to achieve that.
Exact dimension.
Exactly, yeah. But I think that's a more prep, to be honest with you. It's just going to reduce any, any conflict.
In confusion.
Yeah.
It's going to be black and white. They've been asking for an answer, and they were here yesterday to see me, and they just want something in writing, so they can...
Okay, and I'm going to let Dave take a stab at a motion first, and then we'll take a vote on it, and we'll see.
I'd like to make a motion that the upgraded section of Ginni Road on the Crooker property be a width of 20 feet with two-foot shoulders on each side. I'm going to have to go back to your original ones for the tree section. Here, two. I don't know where to start, though.
Six, September 4th, last page.
September 4th, you said, last page.
Yeah, September 7th. Having trees.
I want to put in there the dimension of the trees. Define the trees, it's on the second page, middle of September 4th.
Oh, yeah, scenic road considerations.
Yeah, tree cutting is to be limited to the extent possible or reasonable, combining the widening of the road. And no trees be removed that are at least 15 inches in circumference or approximately five inches in diameter at four feet from the ground.
That has a public hearing, you're going to consent before the Conservation Commission has the ball.
Would you read that here? Cutting of trees. You know, the cutting of trees for the norris circumference.
Okay, we have to read that.
Yeah. I think it's limited to that, though. And then at the end of that, any trees considered to be cut of that size would require a public hearing to be held and written consent to perform the proposed work issued by the Conservation Commission.
I'm going to second that, just to get in the discussion phase. Okay, okay, keep, can I resend that? Keep going.
Any stone walls that need to be removed, need to be moved, must be rebuilt. And any walls that need to be moved would have to be at the consent of the Conservation Commission. That section of Ginni Road to be constructed to town standards, Ginni Road, to town standards, included construction of a minimum 12-inch base course layer of New Hampshire DOT 304.5 crushed stone and a minimum of six inches wear course layer of New Hampshire DOT 304.45 crushed stone. The inside road bend to be brought up to grade a maximum of two and a half feet by placing and compacting common fill prior to the placement of the compaction of the required base course gravel to facilitate and stormwater drainage away from the road bend. The only other part I was thinking that I want to make sure to add on there is the distance of this road. And I'd like to know if we have any of that paperwork we did on the first meeting, Wayne, or... We gave the distance of 250 feet, starting at their property lines. So that way, the length of this road would be determined by that, it's going to be approximately 700 feet.
You're going to do a point?
I don't know, I, I, I just want to comment, I want to get, I'm going to wait for that information.
Who, in our minutes?
How about, um...
So what was your recommendation? Did we do that?
No.
It's supposed to be general.
We could look at Arizona and remember how we did it last time.
But the distance is what you're looking for.
But how we worded that?
That is the, 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 the distance, 250 feet.
250 feet. Then it's going to start at the edge of the, the existing...
Their property line.
Oh, then it's only, uh, we have a...
Again, we were in that trap. Because we spent some time, we were to catch, to catch him.
I think it's perfect, if I can get it, come on, dear.
I'm going to have a second question.
Maybe you could do it by specifying that he's doing the work from that end of Galvin's driveway.
No, it's his property line where it starts, we're going to go 250 feet into his property.
Also...
Because of the medium density.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, so you're not going to have him do the, um...
No, it's going to, the, 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 the improvement will start at Galvin's property.
Exactly.
And then proceed to his 50 feet into his property.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say, that's the, might be the way to...
Yeah, we worded it using the information from the zoning and horizontal information we had. We spent a long time wording that section to make it right.
Gentlemen, are you going to include the turnaround?
I think so.
And there was a, of course.
Notice you didn't put anything with the turnaround in there. So you didn't put anything in your recommendation of the turnaround.
No, that was Jeff's, you know, I know that what he really wanted at the end.
It's, it's actually in this, so I'll pull it from that.
I mean, you can have it as a, as a, you got to have some means of turning it around.
Right, yeah. So I'm going to do that, too, those two things are all that pretty.
You want? Since we're on a, a walk here, in this open discussion, the only thing I didn't like in the letter, I'm going to be honest with you.
Don't be on this, Mike.
All right, I'll be dishonest.
Number three?
Was, um, you make a paragraph, you, 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 you were hopeful that the selectmen will not undercut the will of the town and declare trees a nuisance. Well, it's going to be a judgment call, because if I can't get a plot up there, is it...
No, I, I, I think what we meant was in this process of construction...
Yeah.
Because I think you had mentioned that that might be a way to kind of get around. I, I don't mean to put...
Understood.
But so it was basically this road, you know, back in 1975 was, you know, set aside for certain protection and please honor that, that's basically what, yeah.
And, and the thing is, I, I think we are...
I know, you took, I, I apologize if you took up that, to that, that was not its intention, yeah.
It's just like, I'm...
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I, I understand from your, it wasn't meant that, that way. If I could just maybe make a quick comment, I don't know if I'm a...
No, I, I said we're in a love here.
Okay. I think it might be easier to administer this, um, because the idea is you want to keep it between the stone walls, basically.
That's, that's the general...
Yeah. 24 feet in width total.
And the thing is, it doesn't have to be by per the inch, there may be some variability there, because there may be a tree going three inches into it, for example.
Yeah, well, you know, but, you know, and, and let's say, minimize the, I think you want to have something about, we don't need to have a public hearing...
On every single tree.
On every single tree, right? Just for the, for the landowner who's got to, got to do this, so...
Yes, yes.
I, I think within that 24-foot width...
You're only talking the trees that are, have a five-foot circumference.
Not five, five inches.
Five inch.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what that is, but, um...
But I, I, hopefully it's, it's minimal, and it can be done by a judgment call by the ministers.
Our, our consent was, um, let's say, within, we had recommended 22 feet total. Take all the trees you want within that swath, that's okay. You know, so that's the...
That's your guideline, and...
That would be our guy, you know, try to do what's, you know, respect the character of the road, that you can take within that, that swath.
And I could live with that. I, I, I think that's a reasonable combination.
So I would just recommend that if you want to recommend 24 feet...
Which is generally the width of the walls at this point?
Yeah, it's more like 27, to be honest with you. That's, we, Ron Jarvis went out and measured it.
Okay.
And, uh...
Yeah, but I measured it that day, and there were sections that were only 25.
And meanders.
Yeah.
That's a good one, now.
Between 25 and 27.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think that would be, and, and perhaps you could put it, um, something to the effect of no tree over the 15 inches in circumference can be cut without consultation by, and, and...
Well, I did put that part in there, but you want to take the five foot, five inch circumference out?
No, 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 I want to take the public hearing out.
So just make it Conservation Commission.
Yeah, it would be without, you know...
Consent of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, consent of the Conservation, that way the landowner doesn't have to wait for us to have a public hearing. I appreciate the thought, um, but I think it's, again, just going to be easier for that land, you know, we can...
To be, to be developed without having a thousand different hearings.
Exactly, it just, it'll be, you know, we can work it out, um, yeah.
That's good government, I like it.
Well, no, I just, I, I'm thinking of the, you know...
Balcony.
Yeah, right.
All right, let's, let's draw, let's draw.
This is like a very close to the minimum standards.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just like...
I'm going to read the rest of those numbers, Leo has one more.
Can you, can you simplify by figuring out the market trees that are coming out? Go look. Well, by large, you know, I mean, you're...
Well, yeah, it depends, it depends, it depends upon the applicant, it's going to have to identify a contractor to do it. They're going to have to, once they identify the trees, the trees will be run by the Conservation Commission.
My point is not hard to do.
No.
It's not going to be one tree at a time.
No, I agree.
It's really, it's really simple, mark the trees, they can check it out, say, knock that, knock that.
Yeah, I'm going to try to put something at the end, maybe it'll take care of me. Okay, my brain hurts. In the event there is, uh, a lot is developed along the Class 6 roadway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class V or better highway up to and including the frontage required. Oh, that's not what I noted. We were surprised, I mean, 250, that was after, that was afterwards. I was going to have to scratch that.
All right, I'm going, I, I, I like to just, uh, I'm going to take the meeting, I'm going to put us into recess for five minutes so we can develop something, write it, and come back to the board. You want to get off and stretch your feet, please, and the members of public, please do so. I'm going to take a minute, we're going to take a moment, just put our heads together and come up with some written language here.
Yeah, right on. Right here, man. In the event there is...
All right.
In the event there is a lot developed along the Class 6 roadway...
All right, this is a point, I'm going to say, um, that's what I want to hear.
In the event there is a lot developed along the Class 6 roadway...
Okay, right on this.
There must be at a minimum the frontage required in the ZOE district in which the parcel for development is located.
So, Jim, we, we want to make it, I, I think we got to make more specific for the, for the, for this application.
On this application, it's 250 feet.
250 feet.
And it's the, uh, minimum, uh, what's the, medium density.
Medium density, yeah. The, the road will be developed from the, uh, from the, the Galvin, where the road is basically that property.
Which is Class V.
It's Class V.
Galvin driveway. Class V, and, of Class V.
It would be developed from the, developed from, from the Galvin driveway to the...
Shouldn't be the Galvin driveway, should be not a lot number.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it'd be that.
I know.
Okay. To, uh, extending 250 feet past the...
Good.
Property boundary.
To be developed. Because there's...
Of the lot to be developed.
Because there's a lot between two.
Lot being developed, being developed. Okay. Galvin, how do I let, what do I, legally, legally do? Okay. But it's, it's a driveway in that.
That sentence actually does cover it, because the Class V highway is now determined to be at the Galvin property.
So Galvin's lot is E427.
E427, okay. 250, past the property, past the property. Listen to this, listen to this paragraph that we wrote already. In the event there is a lot is developed along a Class 6 highway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class V or better highway up to and including the frontage required in the ZOE district in which the parcel for development is located.
Those are general guidelines, you're right, I agree with that.
Placement and size of the turnaround to be determined by the road agent. Now, if you read that, and then a Class V now is at Galvin's driveway...
Extends the Galvin's driveway.
By putting that paragraph in there, we don't have to state anything further.
Right, that's why I was trying to get you to read that, number three.
That's what I did read, but I was looking at it, and I was thinking, well, all the way back to Ronald Rogers' road.
Yeah.
But the fact that we've been maintaining that road up to the Galvin driveway is already classified, that section of road has Class V. So this paragraph on its own...
It's good. Okay, so the next thing you want to say, road width, we'll start by the road width.
I'd already done that in the first part of the motion.
All right.
And, uh, what I asked, I already did the rounds.
All right. We want, the thing is, and also we want to put, uh, the, uh...
I did the turnaround already, and the turnaround by the road.
I want to get the administrative, administrator, who's going to administrate, administer this. It's going to be conjunction, because, you know...
Right there, the last paragraph.
Right, but at the same time...
Where any of the trees, or the stone walls come in, it already goes back to them.
Right, for administrative approval.
And I took out the part that has kind of a public hearing, just the Conservation Commission.
Right.
All right, so then the last one we should add, the road construction inspection and reports by appointed town engineer to be paid for by the developer.
I can deal with that.
Funds to be held and asked for until completion and town acceptance.
That's all good, too.
Have you determined that fund amount?
This, this...
We did, because we can have a price from the town engineer.
Yep, yep.
Road construction inspection reports by appointed town engineer to be paid by developer.
By the applicant.
Funds to be held and asked for until completion.
Advocate. It's not, not developer's advocate.
It is the road developer.
This is not a subdivision, go ahead.
Can you put in something about the 24 feet would include, um...
What I was going to do is...
...the utility, just that the utilities have to be within that... I just, I, I don't think we addressed, that's part of the scenic road law, and I think we just want to make sure that that's understood.
Plus, maybe utilities, that means telephone poles and such?
Yeah.
Okay, you were talking about, we want to put them inside the, within, within the stone wall.
The road bed, it sounds like.
Road bed, yeah.
All, all public utility easements shall be within the 24-foot.
Yeah, something like, just something like that, to keep it within that.
Keep it within the 24-foot.
I mean, the existing one now is within like, you know, 15 to 16 to 19 feet, so...
Right, but can I just...
Go ahead.
If this section that they want to put a telephone pole has 26 feet to work with, you're going to tell them to put it at 24 feet? And that's going to be, uh, uh...
Potential.
The road agent has to approve the placement of that. He has to, he has to apply to the clerk, the town clerk, she has to give it to the road agent. The road agent has to approve the placement of that, he has to, he has to apply to the clerk, the town clerk, she has to give it to the road agent, and then he has to say, yes, this is a good spot. But I wouldn't want the improvements of twenty-four feet and then have a pole at the twenty mark. You know, I'd do.
The biggest thing is, I think, just with the restriction that we've already put on the trees, they've gotta come to you to cut a tree anyway, so whether it's for the poles of the road.
Okay, all right, we'll deal with it later, yeah, that's, yeah, thanks.
I'm just thinking.
I, I, right, I'm just thinking that.
Yeah, it's it's okay, it didn't come up during our whole process and.
No, but it's, that's the hang of, it's it's healthy, it's gonna have to be done.
Yeah, but you can, if they can do it within the.
The twenty-four feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, not just that, if you're cutting a tree as part of the roadwork, as part of bringing the utilities, and it's falls under the same thing.
It does, yeah.
I guess that's why we put that paragraph in, so I'm gonna find a cutting uh antenna, because that almost happened on my, at my house, where the roads, they were just gonna cut the tree down regardless, and they, ultimately it did because I thought that also, but they ultimately didn't because it wasn't necessary, so that's why the paragraph went in there, because pass selectmen just signed up and said, do whatever you want.
Well, the issue is, the segment in road is, in the road agent work for segment, they do have the rights to remove trees when it's a public nuisance or a safety hazard. And something smack the middle of the road would be a safety hazard.
Again, we're gonna be trying to be, you know.
Absolutely.
But anyway, if we, if we look at something pretty simple.
I don't think in any of the rules is not gonna live.
No.
Yeah, let's just leave the utility thing there.
What if we set all utilities and easements within the roadway need to adhere to the same guidance on stone walls and trees?
I I think that's good, yeah, at least that lets him know that, cause he's all brand new to this.
Did you get that?
I think it just, in case he was wondering, can I put something, you know, on the other, you know, and cut down that tree to get a pole and.
That's, that's to be serious, so let's put this line in here.
It's gonna have to.
Just so we got, all utilities and easements for this section of road okay, are required to use the same guidance on the trees and stone walls. Is that simple enough yet, covering?
Yeah, no, it's, as long as it's, it's good, yeah.
No, I, I, what we don't want is a utility company going in, just do what they.
Yeah, or or just him not having any, because that's, that's something part.
You can always say, it says it in there now.
Yeah, he'll just know that it's like, okay, that is something that.
I don't know if we have all the wording correct in there, but.
Yeah, yeah, but it gives him something, it it just lets him know that that that's where he's trying to get in there, yeah.
Okay, let's get, let's go back, you wanna go back to beginning again and try to start slowly?
Uh, well, we, she should have already.
Okay.
You're good.
So we're gonna. I already reached what I have, you may need to help me.
We're gonna, we're gonna work, this is teamwork every, teamwork every.
The upgraded section, her motion that the upgraded section of Guinea Road at the cracker property be a width of twenty feet with two foot shoulders on each side. The cutting of trees shall be limited to the extent possible, no tree shall be removed that are at least fifteen inches in circumference or five feet in diameter without written consent to be removed.
Nine inches. Five inches.
Sorry.
But there is.
I've been doing a lot of that here. Fifteen inches in circumference with five inches in diameter without written consent.
And four feet above the ground, it should say.
Yeah, which is what I read.
Above the ground. No tree shall be removed that are at least fifteen inches in circumference or five inches at four feet above the ground.
Five inches in diameter.
So you just did that twice.
It's on, it's on page two of the scenic considerations, the last one.
October tenth?
It is the September fourth, second page. Tree used to find is any wood planted right after, at least fifteen inches in circumference or approximately five inches in diameter at four feet from the ground.
Second page.
September fourth.
For our sake.
Page two.
Right here.
Scenic consideration, man, about it, right, if this is two thirty-one, column one fifty-seven.
So I pulled certain items out there, and it's only one section in that. So read the first tree part you have.
Um, no tree shall be removed that are at least fifteen inches in circumference or five, or five inches in diameter.
At four feet.
At four feet above the ground, without written consent for forms or products by the conservation commission.
Yeah, that's it, that's all.
That's it, that's all for the trees.
Okay.
What's the next one?
Um, any, any stone walls that need to be re, that need to be moved must be rebuilt, and any that need to be moved must be at the consent of the conservation commission.
Okay, see, I ran into the second line, correct?
Yeah, maybe, cause basically, I think it was, we don't want them to move.
Any stone walls.
Any stone walls.
That's why I said that they're gonna come here if they want. Read it to them.
Well, maybe, maybe just have, say, you know, um, whatever, maybe, I don't know, this isn't the right words, but ideally, the work should be able to be accomplished within um, you know, existing stone walls.
Not existing stone walls, but you can. Read, read what we wrote, what they're saying is if they need to move and they need to come back and see you to ask permission to move the wall. We don't want them moving any walls.
Well, I think we, we just wanna make sure that they know that, that's.
Well, read it again.
Any stone walls that need to be moved must be rebuilt, and any that need to be moved must be at the consent of the conservation commission.
Okay, I see, you get the chime in on that.
That's why I did that second, okay.
That's, yeah, okay.
I, so I added to what you already read.
Really, it's gonna apply to more, on their property, they can remove any stone wall they want, it's the stone walls that are not on their property.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, go on.
This section of Guinea Road will be left unpaved, but must be constructed to town standards, including construction of a minimum twelve-inch base coarse layer of N H D O T.
Hold on a second. I did put in the lot being unpaved, and there I don't think.
I think I.
Yeah, take that section where this section.
So the empty part, so the section of Guinea Road must be constructed to town standards?
Right. Okay, so start from there.
This section of Guinea Road must be constructed to town standards, including construction of a minimum twelve-inch base coarse layer of N H D O T three hundred, three oh four point five coarse crushed stone, and a minimum six-inch wear coarse layer of N H D O T three oh four point four.
Correct.
Five, five of course.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
Okay, next one.
Um, okay, that was.
Feet and size.
Yeah, the incised road bed is to be brought, uh, yeah, this was one that I.
Yeah, right, right here.
This is number two of it.
Okay, the incised road bed be brought to grade up to a maximum of two feet.
I did two point five feet.
Two point five.
Recommendation over there. So do you, do you have it written there? Do you want me to lift one of those?
I'll just read it from here now, I'll let you have. The incised road bed be brought up to grade up to a maximum of two feet, two and a half feet by replacing and compacting common pill prior to placement and compaction of the required base coarse gravel to facilitate stormwater drainage away from the road then.
Yeah, but you want to put that right in there now, we'll wait for you, can.
Okay.
We know it's done right. I'm gonna give you, I think we should give the town minister a permission to, they have any grammar without changing content, if they have, I don't know, soon we'll get done tonight, because you don't remember that anymore, I know, but. You wanna be at least a bit literate. I think we're doing that right now.
Yeah, but I will ask for that section, if you can send that to me, I wanna make sure that I, the crickers are waiting.
You have something, absolutely, that's why we're working with experts.
I, I can stamp the draft, but I wanna have it as close to.
Okay, let's do it. Yeah. Price is on you, what can I say?
I'm gonna go through the bits.
This has been an exercise, uh, we started with Everett Road, the potential of a self-Everett Road. And the thing is, uh, no, I really think, uh, the thing is, this has been a good exercise for all the various committees in town to uh basically work together to.
Yeah.
Because we've never been down this path before, this is, this is new path, and we're, we have, they just didn't call anybody in on it.
Yeah, and just, you know, for future reference. I know George Holt would really like to see a standard for scenic roads, so that maybe it wouldn't have to be quite so much process, because the last time we did one of these was two thousand and five, believe it or not, I didn't think it was that long ago, that's when God of the World was done, so all the, most of the cast of characters changed and all that knowledge gets lost, and you know, you end up kind of reworking a lot of this, so just something to think about, um.
Exactly.
And it is, every scenic road is a little bit different, so, but maybe that could be worked into the.
General procedures.
Exactly, yeah, that just.
Kind of like, uh, you know, fire.
Flexible sta, you know, somewhat.
Yeah, you know, if you had these guidelines and all you were doing was adjusting the width.
Exactly, yeah.
These guidelines were the ones we just, we developed initially, just then we had something going, yeah, because the thing is, we had Everett Road come up as a potential sale, and then we have uh this one as a new applicant coming in to to build home there.
Let's continue. Okay, the next one, start with the now tiny ones.
Well, I think I kinda had two started, cause we went back and changed a few things, um, developed from lot E four two, four twenty-seven, I forgot everything.
That's the Galvin, that's the Galvin driveway.
Yeah, extending two hundred and fifty feet past the property boundary of the lot being developed.
Reading how it starts.
Well, first I got it, in the, in the event there is a lot developed along the class six roadway.
Lot. Yeah, that is right, cause that's how we got it.
There must be at a minimum.
That is not, in in, this is a specific line, so.
We reread this, Mike, and it makes good sense, because what they're asking me to do is, in the event there is a lot developed along a class six roadway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest class five or better highway up to and including the frontage required zoning district in which the parcel for development is located. So placement and size of the turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Okay, so.
So by that classification of that road, and we're maintaining it.
Right.
At that Galvin's driveway, it's all either class five, and this paragraph works perfectly.
Well, the thing is, but it's, okay, but we're telling them, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done from the Galvin driveway of E four, lot E four, E, E four dash twenty, twenty-seven, and it's gonna extend two hundred and fifty feet past the property boundary of the lot being developed.
Right, but we have to, but we have to also tell them from which boundary is their southeast.
From the uh, it's south, southeast boundary, from the, it's the, it's a, basically the southeast boundary of this property.
It is southeast, right?
Cause that's, that's to do.
Do you know, well, I have to leave this to Eric, and then we'll do it.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
There were no comments.
Emily, you ready?
Reading this part of the paragraph, then you have another sentence add on here.
So in the event there is a lot developed along the class six roadway, or must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest class five or better highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located.
In this circumstance, the section of road that needs to be upgraded is from the Galvin driveway, which is, I'm gonna say is lot. Lot E four dash twenty-seven?
Two and seven, two.
No, map E four, lot twenty-seven.
Lot two.
Two and seven.
Block two, lot seven. E two dash.
Map E four.
Dash oh two, dash oh seven.
Dash oh two, dash oh seven, like.
Yep.
I need to read it. So if you get that map E four.
Map E four dash zero two dash zero seven, correct, yep.
To extend two hundred and fifty foot past the southeast property. Property line.
Boundary.
Boundary, property boundary. Lot being developed. The lot being developed. I'm sure there are some better ways to word that.
I'm just imagining all the hatching out, they have to be, where the declarations of independence.
But they, imagine being, no, they had, they had brown.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so to extend two hundred and fifty feet past the southeast property boundary of the lot being developed, placement and size of turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Then you're gonna read me the paragraph, we just put in.
Okay, um, in the event there is a lot developed along the class six roadway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest class five or better highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located. In this circumstance, the section of road that needs to be developed starts at the Galvin driveway, map E four dash zero two dash zero seven, to extend two hundred and fifty feet past the southeast property boundary of the lot being developed.
Okay, where did you read the placement and size?
I had that right, kind of at the end of that paragraph, placement and size of turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Okay, that's correct.
And then I had started something with the utilities, but then it kinda.
All utilities and easements.
And easements.
Oh, all utilities, all utilities. Oh, don't forget easements, uh, all utilities and easements are required to use the same are to be held to the same standard on the tree and stone wall.
Guidelines or whatever.
Guidelines. Read that back to us, see.
Um, the tree.
I thought that was done already.
No, you just got a stop. Um, tree and stone wall guidelines, so.
Yeah, we'll give that back, we'll just see if it makes sense.
Just that sounds.
Yeah.
All utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards on the tree and stone wall guidelines.
As this tree is.
As the tree and stones.
As stone wall guidelines.
As or within.
Regarding.
As or within, that's a question.
I don't know, but uh, so we have a, we have a, we have a, we have a first one. Read it to me again, maybe I'll see.
All utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards on the tree and stone wall guidelines.
I guess that kind of lets them know what we're saying anyway.
It just would, you know, generate a question.
Soon as you have it within.
That's, it just flags.
I'm just wondering if it should be within the tree and stone guidelines.
Read it to me again.
All utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards on the tree and stone wall guidelines.
Hold it the same standards, I think it's.
Yeah.
Cause it doesn't.
It doesn't really say much, except that they, it's a question, it raises a question.
Hold it as the above.
As the above tree and stone?
Guidelines. For scenic roads. That's good, right at the end.
Okay, so all utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards as.
Above.
As above.
It's getting something, it's within, but it's my.
And what do you have as?
Because you've already established the guidelines, put trees and, and stone walls, so you're keeping them in that.
I do.
Those guidelines should be in utilities.
Yeah, it raises the flag, that's all we wanted to do, to raise the flag, before we put utilities, you've been talking to someone. Yeah.
Read it to me again, I'm pushing.
All utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards as above. And then regarding trees, okay?
The scenic road guidelines. We're doing guidelines twice in our life. Scenic road standards.
For the scenic road standards?
Yeah, okay.
So my.
Read that for one more time, just to make sure it makes sense.
All utilities and easements are to be held to the same standards as above per the scenic road standards.
Yeah. Okay.
To the tree and stone wall.
It's a big red flag.
Okay, is that the end of them?
I did, uh, well, there, the nine, she can just, oh, she can just copy some of the stuff. We have the width, you have the width there, right?
No.
Okay, what about this one here?
Right here, the lots one, I think, is for.
Yep. Road construction. I want them to develop this now. Now that we've done all this work, I want them to develop the property. I seen this, recall, someone on the conservation commission asked the same question.
You know, it's all about the expense, right?
Yeah.
But now we can get an accurate estimate.
Sure, yeah. I think we gotta take.
Road construction inspection and reports by town.
Town engineer.
By town. By appointed town engineer.
By appointed town engineer.
Okay, yeah. By appointed town engineer, or a road construction inspection and report by appointed town engineer to be made by the applicant. Funds will be held in Esperum until road completion and town acceptance.
And town acceptance. Now, what, uh, just, when we say funds, they're gonna, are we asking for bond when you're on this?
Yeah, it's only for the, it's only twelve hundred dollars.
He, he gave us an estimate of tw- twelve hundred bucks.
Okay, twelve hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a big money.
Okay. All right. Can you give it back?
We're on mine.
So I think that's it, that's my motion. So the only thing that we need to discuss probably on that motion is the width, if you guys wanna have an open discussion about that again. I went with twenty foot, two foot shoulder, Bob.
Yeah, we've looked at the road pretty much, and I don't think he's going as far at the turnaround. Because it does get a little bit narrower.
Yeah.
But I don't.
That's where I measured the twenty five feet on, that's why they measured twenty seven when it starts down that, at that end. It's about twenty five, right from stone.
Twenty five to twenty seven.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, my point would be, and I guess it doesn't, it's applicable to this one. But I would like to see the distance, when possible, being that number. Because you go on some of these scenic roads and it does get a lot narrower. And then the twenty four feet that you forget, so if you develop a kind of a standard, at least that gives you the flexibility of leaving the road. So it is. Now, I know they have to move into the stone walls, but if there's enough stone wall in that area, someone's gonna wanna say, hey, let's just take it down and forget about it, you know?
In this case, we actually, the road's actually smaller than the original road. With this road, it will actually be smaller than the original road. Down.
Not much. Not if you start traveling up that road, you'll move further.
Okay. Okay, um, is there any further discussion?
Uh, I don't have any more.
Okay. I think we have enough to move forward.
Consensus in the motion is that it's twenty with two foot.
That's right, that's what my motion is. Unless somebody amends it or change it, that's what I'm moving forward with. I'm, I'm gonna second that, I agree with that, because it still, it still keeps it well within the stone walls. And hopefully there's no, no rebuilding of any walls through this whole process. It's been a long. Bob?
No comment.
Okay, then that's what this one, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Be happy. Thank you for your patience. Thank you to the conservation commission, to all the other boards who are, was planning, hard, hard given there. And I think the lesson learned here is that we don't do it too often, as you said, two thousand five, that's a long time ago, but I think it's. Uh, one, one of the things we're doing in the, um, in the building department, we're looking at, uh, S O P standard operating procedures, because we don't have anything in there. And like, it'd be nice to say, oh. Uh, I mean, scenic road.
I think you got, the guidelines maybe rather than, you know, standard.
Exactly.
Are a little bit different.
Right.
It's a good idea.
Do you think, um, now that we have this one to go by, and now that you have some others, do you think the conservation commission could put a proposed guideline together?
Yeah, I think we could, yeah.
Some of their.
We got like a, like, we'll get the, your.
Yeah.
We have two set up already, this is the third one.
And if you wanna do that, if you could come back to our board with, here's a future proposed one.
Yeah.
It would also be a good documentation that future select boards can rely on.
Then I could start from scratch.
And then I'll have to read.
And conservation. And numbers as well.
Yeah.
And so you guys could hand this forth and it could be a lot quicker process. And I think that the one part of this that's real important is the density of the district. The length of the, you know, if it's in a low density district, it would have been three hundred feet instead of two hundred and fifty feet. So as this moves on different roads throughout the town, that's pretty important to get that wording in there.
I'm not sure I follow.
He does, he's, he's got to develop two hundred and fifty feet along his property.
So from the start of his property.
Yeah.
On.
Right.
So if it was in a low density district instead of medium, he would have had to do three hundred feet following, and that's written in our new.
Yeah, well, we had George on that, you know, so I'll, I'll flag that for him, and I think he'll, yeah, I get what you mean, I'm not.
You know, the wording on a lot of these things, I think, could be corrected. We're kinda doing this to try and keep this process moving.
But, you know, it's an education process for the board. This, this board has never even had any, uh, experience with this. So, it's all good.
And they're all coming to fruition now, because we're running out of money and the people are wanting to build on the class six.
Yeah.
We have to see, can you make an amendment to your motion to seal those non-public, because they were in the minutes. We just didn't have it in front of us to remind us.
I'll make an amendment, my motion, on the non-public meeting minutes of the C F. It was meeting minutes of October third. What's the time on those meeting minutes?
Um, seven fifty, we came out, or six fifty.
I wanna go, I wanna go in.
We went in at six thirty.
Yeah. Six thirty three.
Six thirty three, also post it as the time on those minutes. I'm gonna keep this, uh, second. I'll second the motion.
For two.
Okay.
All in.
Come and say yes.
I'll tell it yes. Now, we sign those, because we have Jennifer sign the other ones.
Yeah, I will have her sign. She's got mailbox stuff to do with.
Absolutely, I have some more things I gotta send, some homework out to you guys.
Good little patriot.
This is even sort of similar to here. It's a short piece of paper.
No, I'm just kinda asking you, can you just send me a copy of that, Winoveri, but this is, yeah, I think that's Winoveri.
The most, yeah, absolutely.
I think what we're gonna do is share with the, uh, applicant community as soon as possible.
Yeah, we're, I just, that, I'll just bore that on, you know, a few days with the conservation commission members, so they know what's up there. And did you say you haven't pulled a picture of Guinea Road?
Uh, the, the, um, the chair of the playboy.
Okay, Ken.
Yeah.
All right, so he's got it.
Yeah, and I think so, it was, it was so nice, it was like pristine rock wall, the rock wall was up there, nicely levelled.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him just to see if.
And that's, that's what's motivated me.
Yeah, okay, I haven't seen it, so thank you, yeah.
What?
Was it green?
No, no grapple, just grapple.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Our homework, lean is, um, we've got the information from the new rates for healthcare rates.
Yeah.
Uh, go home, study it, and, uh, the health rep's gonna be here November seventh, when she arrives and talk about it, we can ask questions at that time. So we all got copies, so please take it home and study. And come up with questions. Uh, we have an unanticipated revenue public hearing for twenty four, October twenty fourth, seven P M. That's the extra money we got, uh.
There's a memo in there from May, but basically says.
While we're on that discussion, Mike's looking for, it would be my recommendation that we put that money in that rainy day fund. And that would bring us up very, very close to the five percent.
Yeah.
Ten surplus. That would take us.
Yeah, I think it's a no.
So when the rainy day surplus is, I'd like to move that, and then may take it at the end of the year, so we don't have to move any more money into that section.
Right.
It kept us right at five percent.
That's what I think, too.
And I'm gonna try and move a balance in there at the end of the year to bring that to that rate anyway.
Right, you had talked on that before, you know, that, it's kind, it's kind of a. Given that, you know, we, if we let it just lapse into the fund.
Yeah.
That we're at that five percent again, at least.
And remember that fund that you've given us to total, look. It's, it's the, it's the lower amount, it's not with all the anticipated money coming out over that ensuing year.
Right.
So that fund really has more money in there to start with, until we're asked to get back to.
Okay, I think, uh, we have consensus here, so we can make the decision in public here. Yeah. So I think it's a way of, that's what we'll do today.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it was probably, it was of interest to have you chime in, so we know.
Right, yeah, if there's some contentious, we wouldn't vote without you here. Okay, um. Well, this is just, as you're, the liaison with the transfer station, we have Ed Wooton, who's basically asked to come in and ask more hours, just to let you know. Uh, we did have one employee leave this week, um, uh, many years with us. He had moved on to a full-time job with better benefits. And, uh, and this, this may be, he also has a variety of applications. That probably need to be reviewed when the transfer station manager gets back.
And Bob, just so you know, my recommendation, there should probably be a department that do all that. But, um, that's Ed Wooton, he's a very reviewed.
Yeah, I know Ed Wooton. Yeah, you know, usually this type of year, he's looking bright.
Correct, but I think there could be something changing in his, uh, current job, that he wants to make sure he's guaranteed availability to be able to work as many hours as are available.
And, and there was some other applicants too, which will have to be reviewed by the, uh, transfer at the station manager.
So in other words, instead of having him be on call.
He never grows.
He was regular part times.
Right.
That's not really true.
That's not really true, also.
Yeah.
And he's trained, and he's got boots.
Yeah, what he did get, just, uh, copy this.
Okay, so we'll wait for you to work with the department, have a.
And, and actually, he's a little more versatile than somebody else, people working.
He's never only skis.
Yeah, I guess he's bad there at work.
Yeah. Okay, I have, uh, a mailbox, moving right on to the mailbox items, I have a leave request for, I don't know if I should, please, for one of our town employees.
Let's see, migration all reviewed.
I think they're very detailed. Please review those and see if you have problems.
Vacation in November, that's too close to the end of the year.
But there is no selectmen's meeting that week, so we'll be at your meetings.
I guess we don't, you're talking about. Eight hours.
It's not quite forty hours, but just try to use some of these up to the.
Okay, very good. All right, other mailbox stuff. Um, I think my mailbox is almost empty, gentlemen. We're around the, uh, we're up for public comment once again.
Yeah, can you, uh, read that, uh?
Motion. Uh, would you like to have a courtesy copy of?
Yeah.
Okay, when it's drafted, we'll get you a courtesy copy. Right. Anything else for the group? We had a challenging evening today. Okay, bring it back to the board, bring it back to the team.
I'm all worn out, here I'm, Bob, to you.
Yeah, could you reiterate that?
Bob's worn out too.
Okay, I'm gonna open the lead.
Okay, I did have two memos in your basket. I don't know where they, if they went, but I'm just, um.
You gave them the bike.
One of them was, um, the fact that I was addressing, uh, conditions and issues in the town office. And as you can see.
Talk about it.
Yeah, but, and part of it was this, can you see that it's?
That was email to everybody.
Oh, it looks very nice.
And it's been treated.
Looks much better.
And then sealed coated with a, um, stain, uh, prevented, so it's, right, and it's not a leak in the roof.
No, I think we should just do that every ten years.
I just wanted to know that I can work.
For the public, you were to tell the public what it was?
No, no.
Okay.
It was a once.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. And then we have, um.
So beer joint here?
I'd be drinking much.
What else did you have left in there?
I guess. There was a memo from the police department that they're going to be holding a one point five hour presentation on preventing internet crimes against Japan. Uh, and that's scheduled for Tuesday, December third, at six P M. at the school library, and has limited seating. I don't know where that whole packet of stuff went.
I remember initially.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's gonna be at the school, yeah, school.
And then we have one employee who gave their letter of resignation, but would like to stay on as call, on call. So we have two employees that have kind of reversed their request, one's leaving, but will stay on call, one that was on call, would like to be included as a regular part employee, so that kind of worked out well.
Any update, okay.
Uh, so while you're along here, again, we've been talking about the public hearing to accept the unanticipated revenues, scheduled for next Thursday. There will be two payments of that money, and one is we've received already, the next one will be the code of next year, so. I will include that money in our, uh, projected revenues for the budget. Um, we also have next week scheduled Patrick Monty, a C P A auditor from Lansing. He'll be going over the financial audit, and that's scheduled for next Thursday as well. And one last thing, the town clerk, um, had, uh, offered to include our hours for the office during the week of Thanksgiving. She is going to have special hours that week. Her Monday hours will be regular, seven thirty to three thirty. Tuesday hours, she's only gonna have day hours, which will be seven thirty to three thirty. And Wednesday, she'll be working seven thirty till noon. My office hours for the staff, I'm not gonna change, they said they would like to save it.
Could you just make sure it's in Hot Topics?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Want to remind the crowd, um, Halloween, I'll be having a slight meeting.
Yeah, that's the week after.
Yeah.
The first. But she gets up from.
No, you see, I'm giving you stuff now.
They could, yeah, I'm fine, darling. Okay, anything else, gentlemen? I think we're almost there. Uh, Alan, this is an interesting evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine oh six.
So, good, all in favor?
Aye.